I think it's like Caesar, A. W. Clark is having all the people say that.
Amen.
You know, I know that Dr. Wallace wanted to do the introduction tonight, but you know, what I learned as a journalist is that there are always two truths and one lie. If you go through anything that you see in the media, whether it's on paper or whether it's in broadcast, there are two truths and one lie. So I found this article, it came out last week. What the article was talking about, it was the Washington Post, and it was asking, "Why is it that all of these things always seem to happen in Dallas? How does Dallas get, how do we yet fulfill with all the bad things going on?" And I read that, I got the two truths and one lie. Let me give you the two truths and I'll give you the lie. You tell me which one it was. It says, "Greta Collins was one of ten people favored shot by the Dallas police that year, six of whom were black, according to an analysis by the Dallas Times-Herbert, which concluded that Dallas police were killing more people per capita than any other department in the nation. The Chicago Tribune in 1988 declared the city's a racial time bomb. Violent confrontations with police devolved into targeted killings. Five police officers were killed that year alone. The police were angry at the community, and the community was mad at the police, said John Cruzo, a former prosecutor who secured the death penalty for one of the officer's killers. Cruzo, who is black, said things began to improve in the 1990s." That's where the truth ended. "The city elected its first black mayor, Ron Kirk, in 1995, and Kirk hired a series of outsiders with previous experience reforming police departments." That is not absolutely true. For those of us who were on the picket line, who were led by Dallas's Moses, Dallas's John Wilder Price, let me tell you how we got to Chief Brown. From Billy Prince, all the way down to Chief Brown. But once the warriors got into it, that's what made the difference. Commission of Price, even though everybody thought we were just out on the picket line marching every day back and forth, John was actually going in, sitting down, and negotiating with these people. And so they could not just give us anybody from anywhere. They actually had to go find the white people. Marlon, that man was a good man. He was a real good man, he was quite good enough. And then we got Ben Quick, right? And the buddy Levi's back there. He was a good man. Wasn't probably where we wanted to go. Got Terrell Bowden. Terrell Bowden was a good man. And then we ended up with Chief David Brown. And it's good, it was very good that we got Ron Kirk elected. He was the first black mayor in all of them. But I don't want Dallasites to ever forget that the man who has been behind everything that's going on almost in the last 25 years is sitting in this room tonight. Please give him a hand in Dallas County, Commissioner John Wilder Price. When you see him out, he's here on the phone. When he is out of jail, going to nursing home, anytime he goes to jail, he has to go out there. And nobody else gives a different about. So tonight, if you want to know how we got here, we got the right man.
Amen.
Thank you, Vincent Haines. Thank all of you for being here this evening. And I don't even want to just take the credit. If I've been out there long, they would have done something to me. So I'm not confused about that. I had a committed group of brothers and sisters for over eight years. It was on the picket line. Eight years unmatched. Every morning, 7:00, we walked the city out. Saturdays, Sundays, Levi, we were there. And so I want to thank them for their time that occurred. People who worked all night at the post office and came out and joined us at 7:00 in the morning. Whether we started in front of the various news medias in terms of how they were portraying us, or whether it was about Parkland Hospital, and whether or not we were getting just the basic services and upper mobility, or whether that was D I S D, people have forgotten. These are some of the same issues that are looming today. But at the bottom, it was always the Dallas Police Department. Because whether we were dealing with the media, it was the Dallas Police Department that was arresting us. Whether it was we were dealing with Parkland, it was the Dallas Police Department. And so at the end of the day, it was about the Dallas Police Department. The police, how did we get here? And I didn't get a clicker, so I guess somebody's gonna run it for me. And one of the things I really want to talk about is this whole thing of justice. Justice is not political. Justice is biblical.
Amen.
And those of us who come in and out of these sanctuaries Sunday after Sunday, if we really believed that, we would subscribe to the Marcus Scargill theory. That we don't need 24 years, 24 months, 24 weeks, 24 days, and 24 hours, our community will change. Not because anybody else wants to see us change, or because we want to change. And so at the end of the day, I want to talk about this whole issue of slavery. And I'm gonna take a piece on the Democratic National Convention and con. You know, con did something last week, and I'm gonna pull it on you with regards to where we are. This whole thing about the slave trade. Now, I know there are people who say, "John, why do you want to always go back?" Well, you gotta go back to the origin of the trade.
Amen.
You know, Patriate producing oranges.
Right.
America was conceived in its DNA in terms of institutional racism. And what you're going to find as we do this presentation, why we continue to say what's going on today. You know, this is always interesting, and when we say this, people just, for some reason, don't believe. The first slave ship commissioned by the Queen of England, Sir John Hawkins, was named Jesus. Now, how many of you really did it? I mean, you don't have to really say. Did you really know that? You say, "Well, John, what difference does that make?" Really? It involved our people, our forefathers, foremothers over on the ship, Jesus. Now, I'm gonna get to a position where I'm saying that African people in this country, black folks rescued Jesus. We rescued Jesus. I'll deal with that later. But this is the form of the Queen. Next slide. The reason after this happened, it was so profitable that there's a wow. This has got to be the way to go. Would you understand that this slave ship named Jesus, 1562, 1567, and John Hawkins probably so great that the Queen's attention was gone? That's, because I really want to get back to this again. The slave catcher deputized. And what you need to understand is, is that how many of you, and I'm getting ready to go to my car now, how many of you have ever read The Fugitive Slave Act? You know, if I was with a bunch of individuals who happen to be of Jewish, I guarantee they know everything in the world about the Holocaust. The fugitive slave act. And the reason I'm gonna do this con about it, is you can't understand the runaway slave patrol. These are people that were commissioned. They were police officers. Police officers were the first slave catchers. Get our history. But not only that, the system was built around runaway slaves. And the only reason they really began to deal and commission individuals because of the revolts. That's finally began the war. It's interesting when I hear Pastor Haynes talk about Harriet Tubman. Harriet Tubman had the largest reward on her head. Now, she, keep in mind, this sister ain't never killed nobody. All she was trying to do is escape from freedom and come back and get as many of us who recognized that we were involved. She had the largest bounty in the history of this country. Again, if you do your homework, you will know she had a million dollar bounty on her. And a million dollars. And this is the way a lot of those raid. But when you read Harriet Tubman's reward poster, this is not a million dollar reward on her head. Only because she had escaped. So when you look at this, this is basically the origin of those posters. Now, again, the reason I want to keep talking about rewards, police officers, because what you're going to find out at the end of the day is that the system of so-called justice, what we call magistrates, y'all call them judges, magistrates are tied in. Look at this. Next. United States adopted the first community policing model for the purpose of organizing slave patrols. This was implemented in what they call P.I.L.S. community policing. The model did not happen until they began to deal with the slave revolts. Reverend Nat Turner. You know, it's always interesting when you talk about this. Nobody wants to ever talk about it. Nat Turner was a preacher.
Right, right.
Reverend Denmark Biese. These were the people who were revolting slavery. John Brown. Reverend Gabriel Prosser. That's what I love about Pastor Haynes. Reverend. These were the people who were dealing with the slave revolts. And you know what just happened to Mother Emanuel? One of the things they talked about there was that was part of the slave revolt, what recently happened at Mother Emanuel. That's where Denmark Biese, Reverend Denmark Biese. Next. And of course, it talks about the black colors. I'm gonna get around to the slave act in just a second. Next. So the white code still meant you could not vote. Couldn't you abolish it? Couldn't justify it? Different states have different rules. And when you read The Fugitive Slave Act, it's gonna be real interesting to talk about where Texas was, where blacks in the other states, and the fugitive slavery. And some black blacks were banned from certain states. It's really interesting when I, we deal with that whole issue of Ferguson. You start reading that. Was it somebody named Dread? Dread Scott? Thought he was a freedman? I don't see it, so I'm actually a blank battery state. Next. South Carolina black color applied, only the persons of color defined included. Any more, see, this is where it comes in so that you'll get your history straight. 1A, we used to say when we were growing up, Negroity and Blood. If you're 1A of the Negro, you would define as somewhere where the codes apply. Now, what was real interesting to me, you know, not as though somebody was gonna track you back, you know, generation, but they, they made a decision that 1A, Negroity and Blood, that these are the things that apply to you. And that whole issue of vagrancy in terms of slave patrols is even more interesting. Next. The Gen. Girl phase of the American, of the American state is next. So it was a, they talk about this whole slave or black man. Can't mean that interstate law passed in the South that established different rules for blacks and whites. Jim Crow laws were based on the theory of white supremacy and was a reaction to Reconstruction. In the Depression, back in 1890, racism appealed to whites who feared losing their jobs to blacks. Politicians abused blacks to revolts of poor white crackers. And newspapers let the bias of white readers about playing sometime making up black crime. The reason I want to continue again, to keep going back to The Fugitive Act is, if an individual who was a runaway was in fact apprehended, depending on what the magistrate, the judge did, depending on compensation. So if I escaped, and I was caught, then if in fact, they showed that I was in fact a freedman, and the judge made that determination, he got $5. But if the judge said I was a slave, then the judge got $10. You think there was any incentive there? Section 5, United States Marshals and Deputy Marshals, who may refuse to act under the law to cut a slave, can be fined $1,000 and used to the claimant that you can use any such reasonable force that may be necessary to restrain you. Section 8 says, "The marshals and deputies and clerks and special officers to receive usual fees. The commissioners are to repay $10 to a fugitive giving up of the claimant, $5 to be paid." This is the law. This is the law passed in this country. And we want to know what is the origin of how this system has come together? We're talking about a system, ladies and gentlemen, and not very much has changed. And the sad commentary is Bull Caw, service school teacher, had a girl called Cops.
For Christ.
For Christ. Isn't it interesting how they keep coming back and bringing in the whole religious peace into what's going on? This guy was a service school teacher. He was also in charge of public safety. And he was the one in charge of police and fire. And they were using the job net. The officers. That's when he was, that's when he was mad. "The officers, Eugene Bull Caw, served as the commissioner of public safety for the city of Birmingham during the Civil Rights Movement. His actions enforced racial segregation, denied civil rights to black citizens, especially during the SCLC Birmingham campaign in 1963, made him an international symbol of racism." He was also known as a racist. "Bull Caw directed the use of fire hoses and police attack dogs against civil rights activists. This included children of motherhood protesters." You know, I guess what bothers me is that we'll look at BPN. I guess y'all look at BPN. I don't look at BPN. See, I got a lot of other channels on the TV. Those of us who don't have all of those channels, we go to, you know, 38.9. So we look at, about 30.9, so we look at BB. That's black production television. But you look at all of that, and you see the value, and I think, I think we're unfazed. I think we're insulated. I don't think any of us sitting here for the most part think it's going to happen to us until it happens. And then we hear from them. You would be surprised. And unless we get in the system, and that's what we're gonna talk in many, because I'm gonna wind this down with something that Levi Williams produced years ago that has really helped Dallas a lot more while we were on the picket line, than most of you would realize. But I guess my question is going to be to you when we open it up is, what do you feel about where we are now when you see all that's going on around us? And whether or not we're responsible in a way that makes, makes sense? Politics.com, you know about that. I'm trying to spend a lot of time on here. Next. Wallace, segregation now, segregation tomorrow, segregation now. Why does Air Force need expensive new bombers? Have people, Negroes, who've been bombing over the years, been complaining. Don't I see one? How many of you know any history about Dallas? Anybody who know anything about South Dallas? What did they used to call them? Bomb town. You know what I'm gonna tell you? South Dallas was bombed. When African-American people, by the way, get your history, go down to the Southern Forum, the Johnson Library, and get some history. We started, the area out at what, you know, y'all call Valley View, you know, Galleria. That's where we started. And the migration, we started getting pushed out. We still get pushed out. And that's the reason the school system, I'm talking a little bit in a few minutes about the whole W.T. White administration, those who are teachers in the system. The reason we're still catching so much air in that school system, because it's all connected. I listen to Reverend Vincent Hall, he's gonna talk about Ron Kirk. I love, you know, pay, I supported Ronald. Mayor Kirk, Ambassador Kirk, and I was okay with it, until he jumped in the middle of that school thing. And then that's when I spiraled out of control. But I'm feeling the same way about Ronald. And the school, it's interesting, this whole educational process, they keep reaching in, pulling out. We don't seem to be understanding that. And so that's what continues to be. Since by accident, I'm a little more mindful of the suffering of all of these, really? Okay. Next. Santos Rodriguez. Do you not remember Santos Rodriguez, please? It's the only time I've ever seen downtown Dallas where there was a bomb. Santos Rodriguez was sitting in the back of a patrol squad. They were playing, they played Russian roulette with this young man. And as a result, they shot him and killed him. It was the only time I've ever been in a bar in the city of Dallas where I've seen what I consider to be rioting, police motorcycles turned over, set fire, you know, nimitro marks. Downtown just ran, there was a guy by the name of Frank Dyson. He was in one day, and when that happened downtown, he was gone. Frank Dyson, Santos Rodriguez. I think we're just celebrating, or commemorating, the 50th year of Santos Rodriguez. I went into Little Mexico the other day, and finally get something to talk about. Unfortunately, my Spanish brothers and sisters still don't go enough about Santos Rodriguez. Next. Darren King. Who knows about Darren King? I know the police officer. Is he the one? Is he the one that shot Santos Rodriguez? I don't. Darren King. This is a case that is talking about here. This is a case that we brought a congressional hearing to this city to begin to deal with police act. This lady, now, it's interesting, but they always show this picture of Ms. Collins. Well, Ms. Collins was closer to about, almost eight, no, she was 37. But she was close to about eight. Ms. Collins made a call to the Dallas Police Department. She saw, she saw birds. As such, officers responded. Ms. Collins was shot and killed. They said Ms. Collins was on her porch, brandishing a gun. When we did the autopsy report, they removed screen door from Ms. Collins' body, which meant that she never was on her porch. She was in her house. Officers shot into her house and killed Ms. Collins. As I said, there was 10 people who were killed that year. And six were African-American. As a result, a group of us decided that we needed a congressional investigation into what was going on with the police in Dallas. And so as a result, we got a congressional hearing to come to Dallas. That basically gave you the scenario of what involved as a result of the congressional hearings. But we still had to protest, even after, at a conference, even after congressional hearings. We had to continue to protest. The problem with this is that, and I'm not, not going to ever criticize young people for being illegitimate, but you got to have stick to it, yes. You can't protest one day, whether you occupy Wall Street or Black Lives Matter, and you don't stay consistent. Again, we did this for eight years, day in and day out. It could be sub-zero weapon, it could be ICE. And the police say, "Y'all gonna protest?" He said, "We here. We robbery, 100-degree date, we robbery." And I want to give you black police officers some heads up here, because one thing about it, we took on the Dallas Police Department, the black police officers, they came afterward. They joined us on the picket line. Because what they recognize is, and I heard one say, just a couple of weeks ago, he said, he said, I heard it from Little Hanson, I won't call his name. He said, Peril said, he said, "Even now, he can get stopped." He lives in another city in Dallas County. He said he can get stopped, and he gets asked for his convictions. He said he can be in a jail, and he gets asked for his convictions. Peril been with the Department of Labor 28, 30 years. He still gets asked for his convictions. So what they recognize is not much has changed. And we think everything's okay until somehow it's off. As kids, until we get dragged. Then when we get dragged, then we expect everybody to come to our rescue.
Right.
James Jones. Anybody? I don't know who this is. I guess I want to ask any of you, do you know any, anything about the history of where we are and how we got here? How many of you have lived in Dallas? You know, if you've lived in Dallas, yeah, okay. How many of you have lived in someplace other than Dallas? Again, any engaged, if you've been someplace else other than Dallas. Now, we're talking about Dallas, because we get to Collins. And I think BPN will tell you, back when Ferguson happened, we pulled all of our police chiefs in District 3 to get Dallas, Cedar Hill, Glan Heights, Duncanville, Lancaster, DeSoto, we pulled the D.A. in, we pulled the Public Defender in, and we talked about these issues for hours. This was after Ferguson. The problem is, is that we don't continue. We don't continue. We'll do it, we feel good about it, we'll see, and then we get comfortable until something happens to us. You realize right now, we pull the profile right now, for the Dallas Sheriff's Department, because there's a law. On every beat, I know exactly who they stopped. I know what the racial profile was, I know what the gender profile was, and I know what they did. Whatever city you live in, have you looked at that? What happened between Third Street and Second Street? Who's getting stopped out there? Anything nobody's looking, it's something. It's anything out. That I wanna guess? Maybe I'm just kinda going through this last time, we published one of these for you, and everybody wanted them, but I'm just wanting to know if there are any real follow-up, Officer John Chase. I'm interested to see what he does, his following. Do I need to say anything? You know, we recognize that we be police officers in our community. But as the policing, community policing piece that's produced by Levi Williams will show you, there's got to be a different way. Is the Dallas Police Department, is your police department following this model that we're gonna show you? You know, one of the things that I think Bishop Kissick said, you know, we get, I'm gonna use hackoff, without playing. I think he says, "I'm not pissed without playing." You know, we just get, you know, we get upset. We get upset for a moment, and then we go back to business as usual. So what's gonna be our consistency in terms of playing? If when we leave here tonight, well, it's your police department, find out what's going on. And by the way, let me just tell you about police departments. Police departments report to city managers. We don't have a mayor or form of government anywhere around here, Houston is one. But we all got council, manager forms of government. You upset with your police chief? Who's your city manager? When is the last time he or she has heard from you? Maybe you wanna take this plan tonight to your city manager. You got a problem, back in the blue, the blue is your eye.
That's right.
But the problem that again, when we have reported, did you have some, does anybody remember Ferguson? I'm not talking about what happened to Michael Brown, I'm talking about what happened in the street. Did you follow up with the DOJ report after? Based on that population? They were making the budget with traffic citations on the back of poopings. I mean, I understand it, you know, as commissioner, I'm gonna tell you something, right now, I'm not an advocate yet, but right now, y'all know Dallas County about sixty million dollars in traffic tickets. We ain't trying to collect. Now, you know, we blocking your registration, there's a lot of stuff, but we ain't trying to collect. We ain't going out, we can't afford to go out. But cities that depend on that budget, I want you to understand how immersed the police department is. I tell people all the time, there are eight standing committees that I chair in Dallas County, jail population and jail cell attention, one of them has said compliance. But let me tell you something, that jail costs you, if you live in Dallas County, if I can keep the population under fifty-five hundred, eleven million dollars every month. That's what we taking from you. You paying eleven million dollars, sixty-six dollars a day. And that's not counting, now, Parkland does another thirty-one million on top of that. Is any really rehabilitation going on? Do you understand, I just told you the slave catchers, the fugitive act, why some people, are they all dangerous? Or are we enhancing people for stealing sausage? Yeah, you know I'm wrong, though. I can't tell if I can see it, anyway. And yet, we had this discussion, when you was with the DAs, oh, we had this discussion. How you gonna enhance somebody for stealing sausage? I don't care if they done it a hundred times from a 7-Eleven store. You want it enhanced with me, that mean it move from a misdemeanor, C, depending on the value, to a B, to a A, to a F. You don't keep stealing sausage 'cause you're hungry? You know, my point is, is that we need to understand these systems. And we need to say, you know, they say, what is justice? Public policy. What Dr. Wall was talking about a few minutes ago, I was in there talking about Public Defender. And I will say this for Craig Walton administration. I am trying to now, do you realize how many exonerations are still in the pipeline? Have you heard anything lately? But you ain't said nothing.
Come on, now.
You ain't said nothing.
That's right.
Everybody's worried about, you know, woman out, you know, she's got some behavioral challenges and all. The office keeps going.
Preach it, man.
That's your mind. It's all powered up. Who you think represents them and defends them? Your DAs are. And so my, I guess my challenge is, I'm not even upset with that system. What about? That's why I was telling Dr. Wall, she said, "Why don't you get to..." I said, "I can't afford to, I got a challenge." Whether they call it the stepping up initiative, or whatever they call it, but I need you to say something. If you just take care of Cedar Hill, you know, DeSoto, DeSoto's got a new police chief, some things have definitely changed, but you gotta have a American city manager out there. You gotta have a American city manager in Lancaster. I ain't going too much different than Ferguson, but that's a whole other story. You have a sister out there, and then all of a sudden, she's not there anymore. Those of you that live in Lancaster? Well, you got a brother who's police chief in Duncanville, elected city manager. See, I know you don't understand all of these intricacies, but I'm telling you, you live there, you pay your taxes. Some of y'all pays pretty high taxes, 'cause y'all ain't got no commercial. Y'all ain't got no commercial values out there. And those of you that live in places like Duncanville, with eleven square miles, you know, rooftops, depending today, you ought to at least have something to say about what's going on. How did we get here? And so, break that door. Big Clint, I can say one minute, we began to get graduations, see, you gotta remember, those of us who remember Donald Byrd, who y'all, you know, used for a while as police chief, and then sent us as sheriff. You know, C. Clint? And then Walton. Made a little difference. Next. And David Brown, and I know there's a lot of anecdotes about David Brown. And he thought it was perfect. But, you know, one thing about David Brown, he got, he straight out of the play. Yeah, he straight out of the play. Let me tell you something, while, as I say, some issues, but let me tell you something. This brother has removed more problem office. Anybody? In the history of Dallas. That's one of the reasons you start getting those problems with those associations. Okay? Remove, and say bye. Y'all might start thinking, I'm like, you know, you're five, I don't want y'all to make no association. Keep alone. Seven of the officers. Seven. Seven, that's a miracle. That's a miracle. So when they come after, I understand why. Some of them, you know, the oppressed think I'm the ones of the oppressors.
Preach it, boy.
College, you got some folks that look like us too many, they don't, you know, they don't buy you. And as I said, I think something that you, you know, you keep in mind, I might as well say he's treated all the slave catcher, especially, you know, he in here with them.
Say that.
He in here with them. About yesterday. Come on, y'all, I'm not gonna lie, y'all, I'm so excited. So say it ahead, I don't know if any of you don't know, but...
No, we don't. No, we don't. Go ahead. Jealous.
I might go even, I might go even, I might go even this song, child. The law and order can't change. Really? I just want you to have the seer in your mind, because if you don't understand anything else tonight, I can tell you about public policy. One thing I want you to understand, you don't know, but nothing else I said, I want you to get the fugitive act. I'm gonna do just like Khan did last week with that Constitution. I want you to get the fugitive act, I want you to read the fugitive act. Okay? I want you to read the fugitive act. And then, what I want you to understand, in Dallas County, if you live in Dallas County, two-point-five million people. One million eight-hundred thousand are eighteen years of age and older. One million two-hundred-fifty thousand are registered to bump. That mean about six hundred thousand y'all walking around, you know, just loading, and ain't shooting up. In 2008, in Dallas County, you voted sixty-one percent, that was the year President Obama, sixty-one percent. In 2012, you did it at sixty percent. But I'm gonna tell you something about strategy that you don't understand, I went back, I'm gonna keep going back to that education, the W.T. White era. Get the history pushing us out, understand what's going on. There's a reason, that you saw the other day, that the school district is gonna put thirteen cents, I know you, I'm sorry, thirteen cents on the ballot in November. I'm talking about two things, you know, we don't know, so... You can't even calculate. Thirteen cents. Where were you ranging, passing by one penny? Thirteen cents? If you own a hall, well, you know you don't own a hall. You gonna pay for it, 'cause they gonna build it like that. Thirteen cents? They put it on the ballot in November. But what really frightens me is that they also may be in that same position that Mayor Kirk and I got into about hijacking the school district. Keep in mind, this is the same school district that they tried to talk about public charter. But y'all forget that. The guy who was on the Dallas School Board is now the Commissioner of Education. Appointed by the governor. Minor rate, that's it. Notice the shift. How did we get here? Because all of this is, this is connected, ladies and gentlemen. I know you don't understand politically, that's all connected, but it is.
Thank you, Paul.
Name me a school district that does not have a police department. They all got. How many kids they processing? I know because we certify. We go in and we look, we certify, and I have put the question in for the last ten years. How many kids are they arresting? What's the gender? What's the race? What are they arrested for? Notice in how Park, I did those numbers earlier. I did the, I think I probably never been a officer. And I'm showing you some, everybody knows where it is. What do you think their police force looks like? You think it looks like Allen Park? You think anyone else about it like, "That's Allen Park, we got, we got arrested, that's Allen Park." Excuse me?
No, sir.
What?
All right.
So why can't, it's not enough for it to look like that. It's enough for it to be. Hope this again, seers in your mind. And the old little man, we rough these guys up. And somebody said something about that seven times, word shoots somebody that it's, anyway. Next slide, I don't want to sit in the mic too much. So how did we get here? That last video, you'll give me just ten to ten minutes. I wanna play that video with regards to what I think makes, because I wanna leave you with a plan that says, if you go back to your neighborhood in terms of your police department, and you challenge them about the number, write a letter, move it to the next level. This is a video that was produced, when did you produce this video? Two thousand two, when we were out there on that picket line.
In late 2002, the city of Dallas was listed as the eighth largest city in the country with the highest crime rate. The Dallas City Council and the Chief of Police began to focus on reducing crime. The chief's goal was to reduce violent crimes by ten percent, murders by twenty percent, and property crimes by five percent. In response, Manager Three of the Office of Community Affairs, Levi Williams, created and developed the Ten Seventy Twenty Crime Reduction Program. The Ten Seventy Twenty Crime Reduction Program seeks to engage and improve the overall quality of life of citizens in the city of Dallas by increasing community partnerships and participation with the police in high-crime residential neighborhoods, multifamily communities, and business areas in an effort to reduce crime. Dallas Police are targeting crime by going door-to-door and asking for help. The new program aims to put the power of crime prevention in residents' hands. NBC Five's Omar Villa-Franca has that story.
Dallas Police and volunteers went door-to-door in South Dallas armed with clipboards. They're asking residents what's wrong in the neighborhood and what police can do to help.
There's always been a sentiment that we don't trust the police, you know, and to come out into the community... and to come out into, into the community and interact with the people of the community, it makes it a good thing.
Once they start to move from the police is not gonna do anything to seeing the police doing something, most of the folks change.
Levi Williams runs the program and says walking the beat gets more people to follow the straight and narrow.
Code enforcement is one of the biggest problems Dallas police officers are seeing in this neighborhood. But residents are telling them, there's much more.
Auto theft, what about auto theft? Okay, do we have any drugs or prostitution?
Yes, we got drugs.
Okay.
Williams hopes the program reduces crime and motivates residents to clean up their own neighborhood.
I think everybody wants to be safe and to feel that their kids can grow up in a safe environment, you know, so I feel like this is a thing to do.
We're not gonna get everybody in the neighborhood talking, but from previous experience, I promise you, we have changed and reduced public services in crime with the percentage of people that we do get to engage.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
In Dallas, Omar Villa-Fraca, NBC Five.
Together, the police and church volunteers knocked on more than 1,500 doors.
The program is defined as follows. 10% are non-tolerant residents. These are individuals who are willing to be involved in their community. The non-tolerant residents actively report crime occurring in their community. They're active or willing to be involved in a crime watch, neighborhood association, volunteer and patrol programs, or a crime reduction initiative. 70% are tolerant residents. These are individuals who are not involved in their community. They have a tolerant attitude because they believe the police are not going to do anything to reduce crime. The goal is to mobilize 70% of the residents who are tolerant of crime to an attitude of non-tolerant and become actively involved with the police department. 20% are the criminal element. These are the individuals who engage in criminal activity. Our objective is to integrate as many of the tolerant residents into the non-tolerant group as possible. As communities become non-tolerant, individuals are less likely to engage in criminal activity, thus reducing crime and improving the overall quality of life of those communities. Since 2002, the 10-70-20 Crime Reduction Program has had a Part One reduction from 9.5% up to a 32% reduction in 52 sites with an overall average of 18%. The 10-70-20 Crime Reduction Program consists of five important partners to ensure success of the program. The Dallas Police Department's Office of Community Affairs, the Patrol Operations Divisions, faith-based and social service agencies, schools, and the community. In Phase One of the program, the Chief of Police, First Assistant Chief, or a Deputy Chief will identify a high-crime beat where the program is to be implemented. The Office of Community Affairs will then conduct comprehensive crime analysis research on calls for service and crime to determine the reporting area where the program will be implemented. Once the reporting area is identified, the Office of Community Affairs will conduct an analysis of the reporting area to determine the dynamics of the neighborhood, residential versus multifamily living.
Formula to cut crime.
10% of the people are gonna come. If you say come to the community meeting, they'll be there. 70% of the people go, well, it's, I don't wanna be involved, they just tolerate it. Those are the folks that we trying to actually motivate and mobilize to start attending meetings. That 20% usually are the criminal activity.
Today, officers and volunteers went door-to-door in a South Dallas neighborhood to get residents involved. They also asked people about the most common types of crimes in their area. Sit-down meetings are planned between officers and residents sometime in the future.
In Phase Two of the program, once the targeted area has been selected, a community needs assessment survey will be conducted. Depending upon the size of the area, the Office of Community Affairs will collaborate with other intercity departments and volunteers such as the council member of the area, the manager of community affairs, Levi Williams, the division chief of the selected area, faith-based organizations, the Dallas Police Academy recruits, and other volunteers. Everyone will be trained on the process of the community needs assessment in order to conduct the door-to-door survey with residents of the selected area. The purpose of the community needs assessment survey is to identify the following elements. How to improve the relationship and communication between the police department and the community. How citizens provide feedback as it relates to the quality of services provided by the Dallas Police Department and other city services. How to reduce the fear of becoming a victim of crime and citizens' concerns of crimes in their community. Strategies to reduce crimes by effective planning, implementing, and deploying in the target areas such as an ideal time and day of the week when the crime watch and/or a community meeting should take place. Intelligence information gathered from the community's perspective with days, times, and locations for deployment strategies. What educational programs and/or other departmental programs are needed in the community to increase personal safety awareness and reduce victimization.
This one right here is a very important piece right here. It's called an intel sheet. When you go through all the checks and, and check everything on that, the intel sheet is the, one of the most important thing. Because today, you're gathering intel. On the intel sheet, if you're asking the question, if we started today to work on some of your crime concern, what would that be? So, if they, like, for the principal. The principal already told us that one would be prostitute. She told us actually the location of the prostitute. She told us what time of the prostitute, or there. So, on the intel sheet, this is very important. What day, what place, what time. All you're doing is putting the date, if you can indicate, uh, you don't have to put that name. We kinda like to know you, the, the person who's doing the intel. If you notice here, Saturday, 2:00 a.m., Friday, Saturday, and they giving us a lot of information as it relates to this person right here. Now, this is a perfect intel sheet. If you don't write all of this, the number one, three thing. What time you wanted, what's the place, and what day. That is very important. If you leave off any of those three ingredients, now you're making it hard for the chief on deployment. Because we're gonna give these folks back what they complained about at the first or the second community meeting, and we'll show you how we operationalize that.
Phase Three is a key component that ensures the success of the 10-70-20 Crime Reduction Program. The goal is to organize a community association and/or develop a crime watch meeting in the targeted area to move tolerant citizens to a non-tolerant level and establish a partnership with the Dallas Police Department in an effort to reduce crime and improve the overall quality of life. The first community meeting will take place within a week from the Community Needs Assessment Survey Implementation Day. At this meeting, we'll seek to accomplish the following objectives. Explain the 10-70-20 Crime Reduction Program to the community. Provide a year-to-date update of calls for service and crime in their area. Present results from the Community Needs Assessment Survey as well as law enforcement actions taken on the intelligence received from the survey. This will begin the community engagement process by mobilizing citizens from the tolerant to the non-tolerant level. Educational programs taught based on the community's fear of becoming a victim of crime and the community's concern of crimes. Gather new intelligence from the community with specific days, times, and locations for deployment purposes to prepare for the next meeting. In the 21st century, law enforcement has to change its perception of crime fighting to a community engagement process in an effort to reduce crime. In any given neighborhood, the dynamics of the 10-70-20 Crime Analysis could change in order to adapt to any community's needs.
For more information, contact us. Call 214-479-8810. Or email levi.williams805@gmail.com.
As, as Vice Chair of the Juvenile Board, as you know, here at Friendship West, Judge Cheryl Shatman, the chair of the Juvenile Board, we've been in there probably for the last 15 to 20 years. Because of the, we, we engaged in what is called an advocacy initiative. And that basically means we began to divert young people from the system. In other words, all of the Dallas says that the more they're engaged in the system, the more they become accustomed to the system. Again, we've got to have people in place who are conscious and conscientious and, 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 and want to make suggestions. You need to go, you need to be able to observe and know what's going on. There's a saying, every, I don't care what, what city you're in here, I know what's going on with regards to juveniles in your city. Now, I mean, I know those ISDs. In fact, a couple ISDs, because of the parole, tell me that that's the reason the legislature said we're independent school districts. They don't have to report to me. So, what are you saying to your trustees? What are you saying to your independent school district trustees? Those of you who don't have kids in the charter school. I thought I put on that out there, 'cause you know, I'm, I'm, I'm elected board in charter schools. Hello. Y'all get taxpayers, nothing, but you don't elect your, you know, your kids. And I know they, you know, there's so much superior. Just go out on the T E I A, Texas Educational Agency website. Look at your I R rating. It's called instructional rates. You ain't got 2% points between public school and what's going on. But I know y'all in charter school, got you. So, what we wanna talk about is how we got here. And we got here because you are not involved. You're not involved. That 10% you're talking about, that's all I need. Y'all are nothing here to change everything that's going on. But we've gotta have you engaged in such a way that when you're dealing with the school system, the police department, just find out, when's the last time that the people somebody said, I don't even know you're around? Does that even know you as a house? How many of you live in the light? Who is your city manager? I know you know your name. But the police chief works for the city manager. The fire chief works for public safety, works for the city manager. How many of you live in the suffering? Who is your city manager? How many of you live in the dugout? Judge Alperian. How many of y'all live in the dugout? Who is your city manager? Cedar Hill. Who is your city manager? My point to you is is that you live in there, you pay the taxes. You know, if you were to complain, who would you complain to? Councils make policy, managers run cities. They decide this is no city. We are a brother who was in the, I wanna find out, those of you, how many registered up there in Nashville? Now, one thing, an ask this time, 'cause we got the computer here tonight. He's looking for us up. You know, we're gonna make sure. But I also want you to take some, in my opinion, it'll be the pastor hands and most of the pastors in the pastors coalition. I may in all ways. I've had this since, I've had this for several years. We call it Freedom Sunday. And we are all excited. Once a year, we gonna take folks to the pole. Let me tell you something. They have hijacked Freedom Sunday. In all Dallas, we started this. I looked at the numbers and then, we started this. They are lovers. I'm not talking about, I'm talking about, they are lovers in our so-called Freedom Sunday. So, we need some Freedom Sunday, every Sunday. The sun set, free, free, free. Just this bit. My point is is that what are we going to do? Why, why we coming? So, we got the arch, we gonna do the history. But if you don't vote and understand public policy and challenge people, nothing else matters, ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Richardson in Minnesota, PhD brother, running it. Strong, but he's hired by the cops. He's hired by the cops. And like a sister. Running hip-hop screens, sister, running it. It doesn't sound good if we don't know who it is and they don't ever hear from us. So, so tonight, that's my challenge to you. My challenge to you is tonight, don't leave here, as they say, by trip, the same way you can. Go back and at least find out what's going on in your city. Because if you just got that tax bill, like I said, only $30 was the increase in Dallas County. I, I made an argument in court today. Only $30, maybe a $400 tax bill, only $30 in Dallas County. And we got rid of that jail, which is $137 million. I see a few sheriff cars running around. You got a few. You got 1,450 detention service offices, 148. I just told you, spending $1.5 million in your money. I'm serving 9.3 million meals every year. Doing 1 million pounds of laundry. Trying to divert as many people as we can, but need 700 to 900 people to be in jail every day with a minimum to medium classification just so they can serve those 9.3 million meals and do 1 million pounds of laundry at one change a week, which they don't get paid. Sound like some constable later, but I, I got you. They still in there. I just want you to know a little bit more about the system tonight. So, how did we get here? I wanna open up to some cars, Levi, is there anything? He starts in 2002. I think the, I think the Dallas Police Department's still engaged. Are there any other police departments? No other police department. Dallas has now reduced their crime rate. Now, Levi's been gone for a couple of years, I'm clear for it to be exact. They hired a brother, formerly from Cedar Hill, city manager, Cedar Hill. Retired Cedar Hill. He's now a assistant city manager in Dallas. And they've now engaged him to do the program that Levi started, or get some back simile thereof. Crime did not start going up, Levi left in 2011, 2012. Next year, crime shot it. Was it working? How did we get here? And do you even care? First of all, in the next 100 days, it's serious. It's real serious. I can even get to tell you how serious. I said this morning in court, Parkland is $100 million in the whole industry. $100 million. And while I'm upset with them about a number of things, this is the same state, but we not over. It leaves $100 million on the table every month. Your money. That they take and send elsewhere because the state of Texas won't do Medicaid expansion. So, when they start cutting the park, then they gonna have to cut. Because I don't know where they gonna, I sent the maximum tax rate today. Got the existing one, couldn't raise it, well, based on the balance. And you owe 10.47 in Dallas. They pick up another 13.1 million dollars. Well, work on $100 million. Well, work $100 million. So they must start cutting some services. But we need $100 million every month, over a billion dollars. That's our money. Do you understand how medical works? That's our money. You said, "It comes back." State of Texas said, "We don't want it." We don't want it. So as a result, it's going elsewhere. Think of 32 states. 32 other states say, "We'll take it."
What we got to do to get it done?
Well, you got, you got to vote. And you got to get rid of, you got to knock, knock, knock the street down. Yeah.
That's what we need to hear, Dave.
Yeah, you got to vote. Like I said, I just get $600,000, $200,000, we take over Dallas County. I mean, when I say that, I mean that in a way that you get people's respect. Last thing I'll say, open your mind, Ross Crowe. Drop my money, and I'll let him.
Before we even call any of you answer our prayer, you put in place, not just a man, our man downtown with an office. You put together wisdom and people who are working on our behalf. While we're sleeping and we don't know who the city manager is and we don't even know what's going on, you have to show us that we got to know more and we get to do more. It is horrifying when we see our men slain. It's horrifying when we see our police slain. It is frightening for us. But the way we got here and the way we moved forward seems to be so simple. We can vote. We can vote, that's something we can do. We can become engaged, that's something we can do. We thought it would need so much higher. God, show us what we must do. Show us how to put some feet on these prayers. Show us how we can be activists in a way that causes social justice to come alive. Show us how to love justice. Show us how to love mercy. Show us how to walk homely with our God. For these leaders that you have before us, this office that is before us, that has been on the battle line for us, this, we pray, we pray for a Dallas County Commissioner. It's not easy. It's not easy. He doesn't have the kind of grace that we can give him, but God, you can bring the kind of peace that puts everything in order for him. Give him peace. Give him protection. We know he takes a lot of hits. Protect this man. Inspire this man. Fill this man. Comfort this man. Let him walk in front of us or let us surround him as he walk with us. Let us see the warriors, not just warriors on the picket line, the warriors for you. Let us all work together. And for everyone in this office, that we're just as hard, because he makes the work just as hard. We pray, we love, we believe that you will keep us safe and will move us forward. For everyone who has come here this evening, we thank you for them. We ask that you also convict them and allow them to see how powerful they could be in your kingdom. We want to serve you so that you get the glory and the blessings come forth. We need liberation, we need freedom, we need peace, we need empowerment, we need a light on. We didn't realize that we are the answer to some of that praying that they do. Show us what we need to do, give us the strength to do it. We thank you, we pray, in the name of Jesus. Amen?
Amen.